Motion.
Sumo.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Received the invoice history for June two thousand twenty-one, can I have a motion?
Sumo.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up is receipt of the year-to-date budget report from March, April, May, and June and the balance sheets. Are there any questions from the board? I'll take that as a no.
Mr. Chairman, there is no June year-to-date.
Okay, so June was struck. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Can I have a motion?
Sumo.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next up is the mid-year budget update. Chuck, our finance director, can you give us our mid-year budget update?
Sure. These numbers are through, obviously, June. These numbers are through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Try to be conciser on one piece of paper. On the right side in blue is the prior year budget actual. In the green column to the left is the current year budget actual. If we look in the green column, our total revenues year-to-date were four million eight hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars against budget of eight million seven hundred seventy-nine thousand seventy-four dollars. At this point, fifty, fifty-four point nine-three percent of the budget has been reached. On the expenditure side, expenses totaled four million five hundred sixty-five thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars versus budget of eight million six hundred seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. At this point, we expended fifty-three point zero-four percent of our budget. Basically, our expenses and revenues, with some exceptions, are linear. So at this point in the year, we would expect to be, to see numbers plus or minus fifty percent. Obviously, if we're above fifty percent revenues, that's a good thing. On expenditures, that's not such a good thing, but we are, we are close to fifty in both categories. Down below there, I've listed some of the key revenue items and key expense. We should say revenue categories and key expense categories and provided budget to actual on these, on each of those. You will see for the most part in the revenue section, we're above fifty percent of budget. Real estate taxes, we would expect that because they're due earlier in the year. But our real estate transfer taxes were fifty-five point eight-eight percent of budget. Earned income taxes, fifty-one point nine-three percent. Mercantile taxes, eighty-nine point seven-seven. Local services taxes, forty-five point four-nine. And village business, privilege taxes, seventy-five point three percent of budget. Licenses and permits were right on the fifty percent mark. Interest, we are down significantly. Up until the early part of two thousand twenty, our average monthly interest expense was about twenty thousand dollars. It is now down to a couple hundred dollars a month, thanks to COVID and the resulting drop in interest rates from the Fed. So that's, to our total budget, although we didn't budget that much this year. Since that drop, it's been about a quarter of a million dollar hit to the budget and, and, and interest revenue. The less two categories, land development zoning, sixty-three point eleven percent. And plumbing, building electrical permits, fifty-three point three percent. Those numbers have come back this year after that they were down significantly in, in, in twenty. In terms of tax revenues, we really never experienced the doom and gloom that Berghheimer kept putting out in their projections to all the municipalities. Kept saying that there's going to be some significant loss in revenue. That would not occur, and then their next projection said, well, it's still coming, but later. The bottom line is we've, we've never seen a significant drop in, in, in the earned income tax or local services tax because, because of the COVID pandemic. Get on the expenditure side there, key expenditures, legislate, legislator, that's the board supervisors, thirty-seven point five percent. Think we're down there in some categories, particularly related to the conferences and such, which is probably accounting for that lower percentage. Executive administration of forty-three point nine-three percent. Finance, forty-five point eight percent. Legal and engineering, forty-three point three percent. Buildings and plant, forty-seven point eight-four percent. Police, forty-three point three-one percent of budget. The code enforcement, sixty-seven point two-seven percent of budget. Plumbing and zoning, thirty-nine point twenty percent. Public works, forty-six point six percent. Public works ice and snow, one hundred and fourteen point six percent. We had a bad winter. Hopefully, we do not have a bad December because our budget's been totally expanded at this point. And that category of public works, other, forty-one point three-four percent. Pension MMOs and the OPAC contributions were at one hundred percent. We've made all those for the year at this point. Just in comparison to last year when we were spreading out our MMOs over the entire year because of of uncertainty and the recommendation of the Pension Advisor Committee that we invest that money slowly, given the uncertainty of the COVID situation. And then transfers to other funds, we made all those transfers with the exception of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is still, needs to be transferred to the traffic impact fund, fee fund. Just on the bottom there, I have the general fund balance as of the end of the year and as of June thirty, twenty-one. Very healthy fund balances.
Okay. So how would you characterize our financial situation halfway through the year?
Excellent.
Yeah, so, so I would say we're mostly on target with our budget.
We're mostly on target, and anywhere we're not, you know, there's, there's, there's an explanation for that.
Okay, so you also said, I'd like to use these, you know, mid-year budget analysis. So talk about something maybe the public doesn't know about, maybe pick something out. So I would like you to talk about the OPEP, what it is, why we have it, and how we compare it to other townships, because most people don't know what it is and why it's there and why, why it's a line item in the budget, so. So Chuck, take it away.
OPEP stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. So our pensions are covered under the pension MMOs. Other post-employment benefits in terms of lower Gwinnett are medical, medical benefits that are, that are paid to the police officers after their, after their service, once they've retired. Money's put aside each year into that fund based on what the actually, actually determines needs to be put away, so that money is there when those benefits become due.
Right, and how do you think we compare it to all the townships?
We're in excellent shape in the OPEP fund as well as our, as well as our pension funds.
So there's townships that don't have a, any funds in their OPEP, is that right?
That would be correct.
You know, so we're in good shape there too. So our future obligations are pretty well financed, is the point I'm trying to make here.
Yes.
And so there's, there's all these funds and legislative requirements that are out there and, and they're obtuse, but they have to be funded, they have to be financed, and you have to know what they are. So I just happened to pick OPEP up out of there tonight. Are there any questions from any other members of the board?
Yes, Mark. Could you please explain what goes into the category of legislative?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What's in the category of legislative?
That's, that's the expenses of board supervisors. So that's the board supervisor salaries, any travel conferences, that sort of thing. So that's, that entire category is for the activities of the board supervisors.
Okay.
Chuck, as chairman of Tom Ensign Township, would you, how would you characterize our budget figures as compared to others in the neighborhood?
This is by far lower Gwinnett's excellent financial shape.
Thank you, but I wanted to make sure the people here present and those that are watching. Chuck is chairman of Tom Ensign and has been, very been active also with PZATS, the State Association. He's been on their finance subcommittee for many years, and he gives a number of seminars out there when we've had conventions. I just wanted to bring that up to the members of the public that are here and those that are listening. Thank you, Chuck.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? So, okay, I would say no. Is there any questions from members of the public? I know budgets are boring, but if they go wrong, there's a problem. Our budgets have not gone wrong, we're, we're in very good condition, so. So since there's no hands raised, I'll, I'll take that, that we're done. Craig, do we need a vote on this?
No.
No, just information, okay. Next up is authorization to advertise conditional use hearing on Cedar Hill Road. Craig, who would you like to take this?
There's a twelve lot subdivision on Cedar Hill Road. This is just to authorize.
Advertisement for a here, a conditional use hearing on September fourteenth. That's it.
That's it.
It's just to authorize advertising. Authorized advertising, okay. Any questions from members of the board? I don't think so, okay.
Make a motion that we authorize.
Can I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is authorization to accept the bid results for a signal maintenance program and replacement of a mast arm. Chad, assuming you're up.
Good evening. The board authorized McMahon, I believe back in May, to put out the bid signal maintenance, annual signal, signal maintenance contract for the township included in that bid was also the replacement of a mast arm at the intersection of Bethlehem Pike and Penland Pike that was recently damaged. We received bids earlier this month on July twentieth. We received bids from Charles A. Higgins and Son and Armor and Sons Electric. Based on the information we received in each of the bids, the selection criteria that was outlined in the bid documents were recommending award of that contract Armor and Sons in the amount of forty-three hundred and fifty-five dollars for the traffic signal maintenance contract on an annual basis and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the replacement of the mast arm at the intersection of Bethlehem Pike and Penland Pike. So I'm here to take any, any questions if there, if there are any.
Yeah, the mast arm, how was that damaged, a car accident?
We suspect so. It was something we uncovered in our compliance review back in the spring. It's not, it's not noticeable unless you're out there looking for something like that. But typically, when a mast arm does receive any kind of damage, we like to take care of that as soon as possible.
Okay, so we don't have any report of an accident, there's no insurance company we can go after to.
Unfortunately.
It's coming out of the township's treasury, okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from members of the board? I mean, here, none. Any questions for members of the public? Okay, I need a motion for this. I have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is, thank you, Chuck. Next up is the purchase of a wireless modem for the fuel management system at Bethlehem Pike. So Fred, you're here.
I'm here.
So I beat you up pretty good on this for over a year now. So why don't you talk to us about it a little bit? First off, could you explain to everybody what a fuel management system is and why the township has one?
Sure, our fuel management system, if you picture a gas station, is actually what the pump reads out. And it keeps track of all of our fuel usage. Every vehicle has a specific key, every driver has a number. We can track who fueled up when. It totals out for the police department, public works. Whoever the, and it's split between the vehicles, so we can split up the sewer department fuel from the highway department fuel. The fuel management system we have now is pretty old. It actually prints all that information out on a cash register receipt at the pump. So every month I have to go down, I print out, it comes out of the bottom of the pump like a cash register tape with all the transactions on it. So this would be an upgraded system where it's more electronic. Unfortunately, we don't have any telephone lines or Wi-Fi that's close enough to actually send the information. So we need to sell your modem there, and that will send the information directly to a computer instead of going down there and printing it out and then hand entering all the information into a spreadsheet. It'll already be formatted in a spreadsheet when it comes to the computer. It's a, it's a big upgrade that way. And it'll still keep track of what departments using fuel and different information like that. So hopefully, we can get this going and upgrade our fuel system into, it might not be this century, but at least it's upgraded to, to the end of the last century.
We're, we're pretty tight with a buck. So is this the vendor we interviewed and?
Yes.
He was a state vendor, so he didn't, he's not getting any extra.
No, this, this is a pre-bid purchase. It, it's all a set price for all that.
For Co-Stars, it's through the Co-Stars.
It's not Co-Stars, it's Sourcewell, but that is similar to Co-Stars, state-approved. It's actually a little bigger than Co-Stars, it includes New Jersey and Pennsylvania, but same.
Same, it's the same practical thing, right, so, okay, so.
I just want to note in your memo to us, you also said that this upgrade will bring us in compliance with codes regarding fuel storage and distribution.
Yes, it, it, it does include the emergency shut-off and the wire to be upgraded to the current code, our fuel system right now. It has an emergency shut-off, and obviously it is wired in, but it's not current to what the safety code is.
Yeah, we don't want to keep our firm and busy on that, do we?
No, not there.
Yeah, okay, so, so I guess we, we, we had you sweat the details on this enough over the year. So are there any questions from members of the board?
I have a couple of questions, Fred. In the, in the actual memo, you quoted us at forty-six thousand roughly and sixty-five dollars a month. But actually down in, in the details, you said that the price quote was only good till March twenty-first of two thousand twenty-one. So is that price accurately reflecting the small increase you referenced?
That should cover the, the, that should cover the cost of the increase.
Okay, so the total installation and startup cost is forty-five six fifty-three oh six. In the memo, you're giving us forty-six nine fifty-five oh six with a sixty-five dollar per month, so that's the increase.
That's, that should cover it.
Okay, sixty-five dollars a month for, I guess, our service fee. How long is, is there, is there an extent, is there extended time? Was there a finite time where that no longer is the price, could it increase?
That, that number's going to be a monthly charge, and it, it's tied into your cellular service. So like any service like that, there could be an increase in the future with that service. This system, though, would be good if we ever moved it, if we ever found another location. If we added Wi-Fi to the building at nine seventeen, we could discontinue that part of it, and it would.
So we wouldn't need it.
We wouldn't need it then.
So this could increase monthly, yearly, whatever the cellular.
Unfortunately, the cellular service is at the, the, with the provider of the cellular service. Now, just so you know, our building at nine seventeen has an alarm that's monitored. Same thing, cellular service modem there. So we have this problem in a couple of places where we don't have service.
Okay. The only other question I have, I guess. Well, I, I think you covered it, I think you covered it. Okay, I'm good.
Okay, any more questions from members of the board? Okay, members of the public, any questions about this exciting topic? Gas station pumps, okay. I'm going to need a motion, do I have a motion?
I'm just one quick question, because I don't think I see it. Is there insurance to back up the installation and any of the equipment? I thought I saw it, but now I don't see it.
The, the vendor is definitely insured as far as like a warranty.
Yeah.
I think there is a warranty. I don't know offhand how long it is, but I do see the installation complete and submit documentation required for warranty activation.
Okay, so I did see.
I can find that out.
Okay, I just, I thought I saw it, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Sumo.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is authorization for a partial contribution to North Penn Volunteer Fire Company. So this is, you know, it's a little cryptic wording, you have to know what the initials stand for. So, so what, what's happened is, for those of you that don't know, North Penn serves the western half of the township, western third of the township roughly. And the eastern third is serviced by the Wizard Hickin Fire Company. So the firehouse for North Penn is in North Penn, right across the, the railroad tracks up here, just about four miles or so. And they have been awarded a one million dollar grant by the state. And Lower Gwinnett Township is, has got a matching liability component for that at four hundred thousand dollars. So we've originally budgeted this for next year, the four hundred thousand. But North Penn has said it would be very helpful to them if we could budget a hundred thousand of that in this year, provide that for them. So we've had a conversation about that, and so I had Craig put this on the, tonight's agenda. There's, there's a few questions that have arisen from, from other board members about exactly how this is going to work. So what I'd like to do tonight is ask for a vote on the partial contribution and with the proviso that we still had a few clarifying comments that we wanted to address. So is there any questions from members of the board on this? Okay, is any questions from members of the public? Okay, can I have a motion?
Sumo.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I just, just let, so everybody understands that our fire companies are all volunteer. So Lower Gwinnett doesn't have a fire company housed here, we have a firehouse right next door. But the volunteers come from mostly Ambler for the eastern half and, excuse me, east from two-thirds. And, and the rest come from the volunteers out in the borough. So they're, they're not, for the most part, they're not residents, there are a few exceptions to those. But our volunteer fire company is a, you know, a, a real jewel, a big asset to everybody in this township. I don't know what we would do without them, right? It would be, it would be very expensive, and they're really the lifeblood of what we do and makes them, and who it makes us as a township. So our fire services, you know, you can't say enough good service, good things about the service, they're just fantastic people.
I second that.
Yeah.
I'd like to also mention to those here present and those watching that without a doubt, volunteers working those fires come from mostly Ambler, North Wales, very few from Lower Gwinnett. I have put in a request into the chiefs of both departments to supply our board with the names and addresses of any volunteers from Lower Gwinnett that run fires. We, we have to recognize these people, and I have other ideas to that end. But we also have to utilize more financial support from the individuals that live in Lower Gwinnett to support these two entities. If you look at the surrounding municipalities of Lower Gwinnett, you're talking about Whippey, you're talking about Upper Dull, Montgomery Township. They have either, depending what township you're talking about, they either own the equipment, meaning the township, they own the building. They they have full-time service in some areas. So we're being surrounded, and I don't think the board of supervisors now or in the future can educate our residents how important it is for us to support those two entities. We just can't, I mean, every year, every meeting, we have residents here that will not get up at two o'clock in the morning or three o'clock in the morning to run a fire. But we do have residents here that appreciate those people that do that. And we have to make sure that the residents of this township pay some financial help to both of these organizations. And we're blessed, we're blessed, and I think the board realizes it. I don't think the, the public thinks about it because they think about a lot of other things. But when those fire whistles blow off, you can rest assured they're going to be there. And, and now we have if there are, if there is a fire or smoke, the neighboring fire company is automatically sent in by the county. So it's, it's not only the support of the people of the organizations that serve just here. They're, they're getting backup. So I just wanted to go on record to say, to say that. And my fellow board members, as they carry forward in years to come, will continue to make sure the residents of Lower Gwinnett appreciate the volunteers of those two companies. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Brett. Next up is the approval of the tennis and pickleboard, pickleball court layout recommendations. Craig, will you speak to the pickleball?
Yes, I can try. Last month, the board approved the court resurfacing and improvements down at Penland Park. We are on schedule with the vendor to start at the end of August. The only thing outstanding is the layout of the tennis court and pickleball courts. This went to the Parker Rec Board last week for a recommendation. The recommendation is in front of you. It is to continue with the, the one tennis court and have, I guess, two pickleball courts crossing over with the tennis net in between the two. Can you show that, Jamie, up there? There we are. So that is the recommendation from the Parker Rec Board. We would like a authorization tonight so we can tell the vendor how he is going to proceed. So we are, we stay on schedule and we can get this finished by the end of the year.
Great, good question. Has the board of supervisors passed anything in reference to this authorization you said we have?
Yeah, last month for the.
Last month.
Yeah.
And it was designated this particular park.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
No, no, are you asking, I'm sorry, are you asking, did we designate pickleball at this particular park? Or is the reason, no, we just, we just designated the resurfacing. So what today they're asking us to do is to clarify how they're going to stripe that portion that's currently a tennis ball, a tennis court and one pickleball court. And there's, there's basketball.
Yeah, I know, I'm very familiar with it. I, I don't recall.
We didn't authorize how it would be striped.
Or how it would be used.
Correct.
All right, because I have my opinion on that, there's a subcommittee that came up with this.
Well, this is actually the, the recommendation of the Parker Rec Committee, the Parker Rec Board voted on this, not the, not the subcommittee. Well, this is actually the, the recommendation of the Parker Rec Committee. The Parker Rec Board voted on this, not the, not the subcommittee.
The, the thing that I was surprised about pickleball, because this, I'm getting, I was educated over the past year and inundated with a lot of residents to play is the sound of pickle. I mean, that's just nothing.
So I think, Mr. Mr. Brandt, in this, they're actually recommending two courts, but then they're talking about an acoustic kind of barrier around the fence line because there is a property that's
Oh, good.
within like 30 feet.
Okay.
The questions that I have, no, no, it's written in the letter. It's in the letter. It's in our manager's report. I think the clarification that I don't want to step on your toes that I'm looking for is, A, what's the cost of this acoustic barrier along the fence line to the home that's within 30 feet? But also more importantly, have we made a decision, I guess, as a township or amongst us as residents, that this is the location that we truly do want pickleball? Because if we're going to invest not only in striping for the court, but then we're going to invest in a sound barrier, but if we truly know that we would like to have four to eight more courts at another location, does it make sense for us to stripe and prepare this area when truly we're thinking pickleball should be somewhere else, less residential?
I miss the acoustic fencing and I'm, I'm happy to see that. So my fault I missed that, but that was a concern. Okay.
I'd like to know more about the acoustic fencing. I've seen it on other pickleball courts in other municipalities. I don't know if you're considering using the same thing, how effective it is. And I see there's another recommendation for landscaping. So I'd rather not designate this as our end-all-be-all site for pickleball until I get more information on that because I do think, as Mr. Brandt said, sound is a significant issue to consider here. And I think it affects more than just, it will affect more than just one home there.
One home that's, this is within 30 feet, like right truly next door. But I guess my question, kind of like what you're raising is, is this our pickleball site? If it's not our pickleball site, should we be investing this amount of money and time and effort? But more importantly, this recommendation doesn't have a cost for the acoustics and the fence, around the fence line. So without that figure in front of us, I think it's hard to make a recommendation that this should be the pickleball site. In my opinion, however, we have to make a decision because they're about to do the striping at the end of August or beginning of September, my understanding. So we don't have the luxury of waiting too much longer because our next board meeting is the end of August. I believe that'll be when they're going to start striping.
Well, maybe we can just approve the striping and then wait to learn more about the acoustic fence and the landscaping to see how much those are going to cost.
And I think if you're striping it, you're saying that.
You're saying that they can play pickleball.
The courts are going to be, Craig, can we get this information and discuss it at our next meeting? Is that still within the timing of the striping?
Daniel, if that's what, if that's what the board wants, yeah, that's what we'll have to do. The striping has to be done while the weather does not go under 50 degrees. So that's what we're looking at. So if we start, that's why we were starting at the end of August, they're looking at sometime in October that they'd be actually doing the striping and the, the painting. So. Okay, if not, then the striping will be done in the spring. I'm just letting everyone know that there could be just a block down there. So.
Well, this is July and you're saying the striping is due to be done in October?
By.
Right. All the courts are being resurfaced starting in August.
In August, okay.
They're thinking it's going to be about six weeks.
But the lining of it is at the same time?
Well, the striping's at the very end.
Okay.
And they're saying it's going to be about six weeks to do the full resurface. So they can't.
What's your thoughts on?
Um, so I think there's other recommendations that I don't see truly represented in this memo, but I think my question is, and I want to ask my fellow board members or maybe even send it back to the Parker Rec Board as a whole. Why don't we actually designate where we would like pickleball truly to be? If this is not next to residential homes, if this is truly not where we want pickleball to be, is it worth our time investing in foliage and acoustic barriers and striping it for pickleball? If we truly understand that it will be a disturbance, it will be loud, it will potentially, but you know, not be pleasant for the residents that live within close proximity, why don't we identify where we would like pickleball to be? And then address that and move forward and outline a plan rather than striping an area that we know is not the best place? Because we would need to do a lot of remediation in order to make it comfortable for the residents who already live there. And move forward with the park being as it has always been, which is a tennis court and basketball court. And why not address some of the concerns that were brought up at the Parker Rec meeting around ensuring that our basketball courts are accessible to children, not only adults. So having an adjustable arm for at least one of the basketball courts and, and going forward that way. That, that's my suggestion. That's my concern. That's what I, my recommendation.
We were looking at this as pickleball because it's existing down there.
Yes, and it's not really utilized that much, but if it was utilized at the rate of two courts opposed to one, then there could be some pushback, I think, from a resident whose house is truly 30 feet from the actual pickleball court. Much less the people across the street.
Discussion at the committee meeting was that and, and this can still be discussed further, but that there was not really a better option to, to place the pickleball courts and the other parks have been examined. This seemed to be the, the only resort and due to the real interest in pickleball of many of the residents, the decision was made to go ahead and, and utilize the tennis courts for the pickleball. And in order to address the issue with sound, the recommend, recommendations were made for the sound barriers to go up. I, I understand we don't have like a long-term strategy for the township as to where we want to put things. And we are also trying to understand the interest of the residents through a, a survey, which will be coming out. So i- if there's some concern about locating it at this position, then maybe we can wait till that survey at least comes back to help us understand what the, the community prefers.
Jesse, can I just see a question? You're on that subcommittee. Was there any consideration of putting these courts on the Pen Amber Park at the end of the parking lot that exists now, near the railroad tracks? I, I took a look at that and I thought that was away from residential. You only have the railroad tracks there. And the sound, but yet I, I'm not familiar how effective those sound barriers will be. If they're effective, very effective, depending, do they reduce the sound by 25%, 50%, you know? That's my only concern and I, you know, again, it's a I was just shocked about the sound of pickleball. How loud it is. And I, I would hate to have the residents that live across the street from that park be violated their sound to hear that on a regular basis and come to us and say it's unbearable, you know? So that's what my concern is.
So I would ask the chairman to recognize Kathy Morris, the chair of the Parker Recs Board, who's here in attendance.
Hi Kathy, would you like to, would you like to make a comment?
I, I think there are multiple issues here. It's not just where should we have pickleball? I, I think that first of all, there was a pickleball court at Pen, on the Penland Park court, on that tennis court. Yes, just one. There was one. So you want, well, I guess you would see it now, right? There's, the lines are still there, right? Yeah, the lines are still there. So that was added two, three years ago? Pedro, do I have that right? Yes, that's about us. Pedro is our, our representative for pickleball. He's here. So I think what we discussed at the Parks and Rec Board was that let's start first with restoring what had been there before. Now we have the option of turning it, like you saw, what we, we could do was you could add two pickleball courts onto there. Actually, the truth is, we could put four. There is space for four, but we decided it would be too noisy. We were, we would look into, because we do know that there's a noise issue. So it was also recommended that how about we suggest, because this is, we, we're advisors, we're saying, we're not going to, you know, I think we should put some kind of sound barrier. We should put some, a sound barrier. Because you can do that. You can put that along the fencing. And you can also add some landscaping around it that would also help absorb the sound. If we are going to look into a pickleball court somewhere else, it's not going to be cheap. Just think about what the cost was for the resurfacing of that court itself. So I don't think we're in a position yet, I don't think so. To, to me, this is a big project that we have to look into. So we have been going around looking at other courts. We just started a few weeks ago. We're visiting and we went to Lansdale, we went to Wentz Park, we went to a couple of other places that have pickleball, talking to their Parks and Recs directors. So we're starting this process, you know, of, of looking at other pickleball courts. Frankly, my feeling is there should be more than one. There should be more than one location. I would, I think it would be great if we had one, at, at one end of the township and maybe, if we have two, and maybe we can get two or three somewhere else. I went over to Three Tons Park last week. They have four, am I right? Four pickleball courts. It was noisy. I, I, I'm not going to tell you it wasn't. There's a family that is right, it's in their backyard. And then there's another family that's on the other side of the street. And I spoke to the gentleman, he's outside, cutting his grass. And I asked him, does the noise bother you? He said, it almost becomes like white noise after a while, that you just kind of, it's like somebody mowing their grass or something like that. He actually complained about the lines because he's a tennis player and he, he said the lines up, you know, they, he got, they were distracting to him, he said, but then he got used to it after a while. So that is, that is a concern. I mean, we've heard that too. That's another complaint from tennis players. So we thought at least going forward for now, can we get those lines on, look into some kind of sound barrier? I have no idea what the cost is. I have to be honest with you. I, I don't know. Maybe we'll, we'll start looking into it. We can if you want. I mean, I don't, I, I don't quite understand how that works if the Parks and Recs are supposed to do that or that turns to you, Craig? I don't know. Yeah. So that's our recommendation. This, it's a, it's a big sport. I think it's going to take more than two courts, honestly. I mean, we're looking, I, my, my feeling is I would love to do it in, at Penland Woods, what a great spot. But we're looking also at Oxford Park and Pen Ambler Park too. So, but that'll be actually constructing it. So I think that'll take a little longer to do that. So at least for our pickleball players, can we get it restored at least for next spring? That's what I'm thinking and what we're thinking.
Kathy, question?
Yes.
The, the sound barriers, have to just look into that and.
No, I, I saw that they're very, they are effective. Now, I don't know the percentage, but my guess is it'll, I mean, my feeling is it'll probably be no different than you hear tennis. I, I, you know what I mean? That, that, that ball, the pickleball is hard.
Yeah.
And there's also other options too, of using different kinds of rackets and the ball. So I think even the sport itself is starting to change a little bit because they do know it's noisy.
Okay.
Not right, Pedro? See?
I, I know.
I'm learning a lot about pickleball, by the way.
Yes, we are. But I want to thank you and your board for looking into it because it's
Oh, yeah, it's ongoing.
And it's new to the township.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure we covered the sound thing.
Sure. I mean, obviously we have an issue at hand because the striping has to be done. That, that, that's where we are. I mean, we added the striping before. Could we get the tennis and then add the pickleball later? I guess we could. I'm, yeah, right? I mean, because we added it before. So that would be an option. But I know the pickleballers are waiting to have a place to play. Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the process we went through.
Kathy, when, excuse me, when is the survey going now?
So it, it should go out in August. It's going to go in the August e-newsletter.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah. So the question, we do have a question in there about pickleball, you know, if, if people are interested in playing pickleball. So.
Yeah, great. We'll get some good data.
I think from what I saw at all the parks where I went to, there was lots of people playing pickleball. Land, Lansdale, it's a memorial park. Theirs is very nice. It's, and it's on top of their tennis courts. There's four tennis courts and they put them right on top of. There's residents right next door to them. There's houses right there. Yeah. It's right there. Four nice courts. Anything else? There's.
My name is Pedro Geraldino. I have been a resident with my wife of Lower Gwinnett for about 30 years since 1991. I would like to review a little bit of the history of pickleball in, in the town. About three years ago or so, I was reading one of the quarterly print newsletters. And I was absolutely thrilled and excited when I saw that a pickleball had been inaugurated at Oxford Park. So I immediately drove, drove over to Oxford Park, only to find that there was no pickleball court there. So I came here into the township to ask what happened. I read the newsletter. I drove to the park. It's not there. There were, had been some issues, some questions along the way in terms of the construction, the orientation of the court. So no, there was no court. However, there was then consideration for resurfacing the Penland Village Basketball Court and Tennis Court. And as part of that, putting a pickleball court there. So in fact, about three years ago, the township invested more than a quarter of a million dollars resurfacing the basketball courts in Penland Village. And the tennis court was put in there and the pickleball lines were drawn, drawn in. Less than three years later, that surface had completely cracked up. And when you are bouncing a large basketball on it, it doesn't really make a big difference. But if you are bouncing a very small pickleball court, a crack makes a big difference and sends the ball in a totally unexpected direction. So one of the thoughts that I would like to leave with the supervisors is to make sure that some steps are taken to guarantee that the current investment of a quarter of a million dollars in resurfacing the basketball courts will be lasting longer than the last time that money was spent for exactly the same purpose, resurfacing the basketball courts in Penland Village. So while the line item has been called pickleball and tennis, please be very, very cognizant that the overwhelming majority of the expenditure here is to resurface the basketball courts. Make some of the poles safer with additional wraparound protection. Making sure that some of the boards are adjustable so that the children can also play and enjoy the sport. The cost of lining the pickleball courts are almost incidental. And the one thought that you must not walk away with is to think that because one or two pickleball courts are in Penland Village, that will be sufficient and enough for Lower Gwinnett. It will not be. You all received last summer, four, five, six, seven emails and letters from different residents here in Lower Gwinnett, all of them encouraging you to create, like some of our neighboring, neighboring communities, world-class facilities for pickleball. Upper Gwinnett has one that is even lit at night. So in all likelihood, we should consider having pickleball courts in multiple locations throughout Lower Gwinnett. We will have to revisit the issue of court orientation in Oxford Park, noise levels in Penland Village, and perhaps there are some other issues in Pen Ambler, which I'm not aware of. So quick summary of key points. One, what guarantees do we have that this quarter of a million dollars resurfacing basketball courts is going to stay there longer than two or three years? Two, we are going to need more locations and more than just one or two pickleball courts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have that, um, comment on Zoom, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, it's Mark Schaefer, Lower Gwinnett resident, and I just wanna make the comment, I've got a background.
Mark, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
I have unmuted. Am I unmuted now?
Still can't hear you.
Or do we have the ability to receive audio?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, I'm, I'm unmuted at my end.
So.
Probably us.
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not? No, they're saying it's.
You sure?
Well, Mark, it sounds like we can't listen to you.
Can you type it in the chat? Can you type it in the chat?
Well, it's always nice talking with you, Mark.
Can you type it in the chat?
They can hear on this.
Oh, the Zoom people can hear.
Yeah. I don't know, we tried it earlier today, and it worked fine, so I don't know. I have the right speaker attached, I don't know.
All right, well, it looks like we're having technical difficulties, and we're not gonna be able to interact with our Zoom.
Background acoustical engineering, oh, you wrote it, go away. Can you go back to the chat? Can you see it? He says he has a background in acoustical engineering, he'll be happy to assist with the sound barriers.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. We'll take you up on your offer. Appreciate it.
Can we address the point about the durability of the blacktop that's going in? Craig, is that, is there some history?
Last meeting, uh, our engineer told us, and the last time we did, we did a, uh, more of a Band-Aid, we did not spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on it. Um, we did more of a Band-Aid that did not hold up, because we didn't feel like spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we thought we could get it done and, uh, get more usage out of it, a longer lifespan. Or not a longer lifespan, but more years out of it. Um, so, um, but Jim Hirsch explained last time, this is a new method that, uh, it has been approved, and it has, he has seen it over the years, hold up to the durability, so.
Was drainage?
Everything was, yeah, everything was discussed with, uh, pipes underneath it and drainage getting away from the court, so it doesn't hold underneath it, and so forth, so.
So the expected lifetime of this new, uh, blacktop?
As long as the court held up for, uh, you know, thirty years before that.
Okay, so don't hit those pickleballs too hard.
So just, I guess, for clarifying purposes, I know that at the last meeting, Jim had talked about strapping being a necessity for us to vote on. The, and that there would be new basketball hoops, there would be new guardrails. Was there any explanation, or is there any specifics around the ability for us to have adjustable hoops, at least at one of the courts, for children to be able to play basketball?
We didn't discuss that at the time, but since this memo came out, uh, me and Jim Hirsch have discussed it a little bit, so we're, he was gonna look into it.
Okay.
Uh, he was not available tonight.
So everything will be replaced?
Everything is being replaced.
The backguards, the, the, the netting, everything?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, that's what the backguards, that's what.
Uh, I wanna thank Subcommittee for all the work you've done and everything that I have heard. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the layout recommendation for the Park and Rec Board, for, uh, Pendlewood Park. And I'm sure that the township and the Subcommittee will investigate the acoustics of the guard as much as possible, because, uh, I have heard from a lot of residents, uh, I think there's a tremendous more interest, from what I'm hearing, on pickleball than tennis. So, uh, and as I understand it, it's, it's always a double, um, two and two. So, okay, so I, I'm making, uh, that recommendation, uh, based on the comments I, I heard.
Just clarification. Mr. Brent, you're making that recommendation, what about the cost of the, of the acoustics or the barriers or the?
Well, that, that's not on this, it just says the layout of, of Penn, uh, the Park and Rec Board, uh, for recommendation for the layout. The acoustics was brought up tonight, and I don't, I don't see anything, Danielle, on the cost of it. But I, I definitely, knowing that park, we would have to put acoustics up there sometime.
Well, and to Danielle's point, I don't think it would be prudent for us at this point to actually approve it without knowing the actual cost. I have no idea, I mean, I saw these, uh, up in, uh, Lowmoreland, uh, they were significant barriers, and I did talk to some of the residents behind them, I actually played there, and they were happy with it, there was a whole neighborhood behind there, but this was, uh, I think I sent a picture of Sandy. Yeah. I think they will be affected, I just have no idea how much they cost. So I'd be more comfortable passing the whole package of emotion at our next meeting, and it sounds like we have time, um, in terms of when, when the, uh, inning has to be done.
Can we, can we get multiple recommendations for, as to the cost and, and the type of barriers that we could potentially implant, landscape and sound barrier?
Sure. Okay, so what, what I'm hearing is, um, I'm hearing a couple things in the board, right? So my, my concern is not getting this done while the temperature is, is appropriate to get it done. So the acoustic component of this, we can have that in a separate discussion. It doesn't need to be part of the, uh, the layout recommendations, because if they're not gonna do the layout recommendations now, it may be, uh, sometime in next year before we actually are able to stripe the courts. So what I'd like to do is, is, as you see it in front of you, it's a recommendation, uh, to, um, to pay, to, to, to paint the layout and leave the acoustic barriers for a discussion in August, if that's okay with everybody.
I agree with Mark. And, and address the acoustics later.
So, just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, even if we make the determination that the, the acoustic barriers are a hundred thousand dollars, therefore making pickleball not feasible at that park, you would prefer to approve the pickleball now and then deal with the acoustic barriers?
We're, we're approving the striping now.
Yes.
Period.
Yes, I understand what you're saying, you, you wanna stripe it regardless of what the cost of the acoustic barriers.
That's correct.
Well, the, the other thing, as I understand, uh, the, the request is to do the, the paving because of the time barrier. Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard you say if we delay this because of, of the time of the year, it'll push everything back.
It, it could, yeah. They can't paint anything if the temperature's gonna drop below fifty. So we can do the whole court resurfacing, we can paint the basketball courts, you can put the tennis courts in, and not put the pickleball court in.
And we could paint that at any point.
And we could paint that in the spring.
That's, I agree with, uh, Danielle on that, you know, we can paint it later. The thing is, if it needs a new service, what I'm hearing is, is it wasn't.
Yeah, that's approved, that's, that's.
Approved, Mr. Okay.
We're on the schedule for that. What the vendor wants to know is the layout, so he can prepare all his material, because he says there's delays in materials, so.
And, and just to clarify, what, what Miss Hunter, there's delays?
I didn't know it was gonna be this long of a discussion.
Just to clarify, um, just to clarify, so the August meeting is not enough time, or it is enough time? Because I thought you told Ms. Hunter before it was enough time.
Well, to me, it's enough time, I don't, I don't know. It's the last thing that he has to do, so it's not like I'm telling him he's, you know.
I got you.
So if October comes and it's forty degrees in all of October, then we, we don't paint till the spring?
Not everything, just pickleball.
Well, well, if it's forty degrees and, and he's not done with the surface, then he's not gonna paint the basketball either, he can't do that either.
But then, okay.
That's, I, I, I mean, you know.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But we're only dealing with pickleball.
Correct.
Okay.
So who made, who made the motion?
Um, the chairman made a motion for us to move forward.
With, for everything except for the acoustical barriers. Right, and get that all done and worry about the acoustic barrier at a later date. So I made a motion, is there a second?
Sorry, I'm Carol Jones, three ninety mansion, I have no independent village. If you're, um, putting the lines down for the pickleball now, um.
Putting all the lines down, not just for pickleball?
All of them.
Correct.
Just to stop people from playing pickleball now.
All, the, the, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Craig. So when they paint the lines, they're talking about basketball, they're talking about, uh, tennis, and they're talking about pickleball, is that correct?
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
All right, so, so there's one bit out there to do all the painting, and my, my motion is to complete all the painting all at once. So the vendor doesn't have to come back at a future time and then do the pickleball separately. But they may not be able to do anything if we wait until August, because the schedule would mean October, and that could mean it's too cold. So that would mean none of it gets painted.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, please stand and be.
Clint Eilers, Two Beth Drive, Lower Gwinnett. What's the last, uh, Clint Eilers, Two Beth Drive, Lower Gwinnett? Clint Ellers, whatever, uh, what's the, uh, what's the last date that the guy has to, the paint striper, that he has to decide, what's the last date that he needs the configuration? Because if he just needs to order the material now, order the material now, decide on the pickleball layout, and if you're gonna do it or not do it, and you can change it before he stripes, right? I mean, that's almost a last-minute decision.
He wants the layout before he starts.
Right, but he, I think you said earlier that it was really just an issue of supplies, because they're in demand, right?
Because we have four, we, we have four pickleball courts down there, he wants to know how much he has to buy. One, we had, we had one that was just, we had one that had four pickleball courts, we had two pickleball courts. It's all sort of. He's asking for the layout before he starts the project.
I just think you have more than enough time to decide what that layout is, if it's a material issue. I think you have more than enough time to decide what the layout is.
But we won't meet until August. So if we wait until August and he can't.
But he can't, he can't stripe till September anyway, right?
October.
October. Right, but that's scheduled right now for October? I don't know how long it takes to lay out a, a striping thing.
Well, the all of them wouldn't just be the pickleball.
Well, I know, I'm saying, I know, I just mean laying it, he just needs to lay it out on a computer, right? He's not going out there to lay it out before he paves. Right, and he's not striping until October. He just needs to lay it out to determine how much material he needs. Yeah.
Like every, every contractor, he wants to know what he's getting answered before he starts.
No, I totally get it, I would plan for the whole thing, but tell him not to, don't make that decision until you guys get an approval on the acoustics. Because like Danielle was saying, it could be a hundred grand.
So, so then you're, then you're left with a question of acoustics. So now you've tied acoustics to the layout of the pickleball court.
I would say, do what you said, is approve it, move forward with that, but don't make the final decision on actually striping it until the next meeting, once you get some info on how much it's gonna cost to do your acoustic.
But just to clarify, we've already approved everything. The only thing that we need to verify today is the striping of the pickleball. Everything else is already approved. And I'm saying, if we're moving forward with the striking of the pickleball, my understanding is that the stripping of the pickleball is contingent upon us being able to have an adequate sound barrier. So if we're not sure of the cost of the adequate sound barrier, how can we say that we're moving forward with pickleball?
That, that would mean that, um, if we don't know the cost, and then we decide to go ahead and, uh, put the sound barrier in, then the sound barrier in the striping wouldn't go in until next year.
Well, the issue is, if you put the pickleball in in October and it's striped, there's nothing we can do to stop people from October until forever, till we get the sound barrier from playing pickleball.
Well, now the vendor's gotta come back again, he could charge us for that.
He's only striping pickleball, he's not striping an entire basketball court and tennis. I just think that in order for us to make an accurate decision that takes everything into account, especially the people who live there, we should include everything into our decision that we're about to make. Not piecemeal it, that's just my opinion.
All right, so I'm back to, I have a motion. The motion is to proceed with everything without the, um, sound barrier. So is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Now I'm gonna call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion fails to pass. So that means, Craig, that this item, line item is tabled. Thank you.
So Craig, can we, can we request that you come back to us by our August meeting? With a few recommendations of cost around sound barriers?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
And how long it would take for us to take possession and be able to install on. Sure, thank you.
Okay. Next up is citizens' comments, concerns, or questions on items that are not on the agenda. Are there any questions or comments from members of the audience? Please, uh, could you provide a microphone? Hi, Mr. Cameron, hello.
You have to tell the whole story pretty quickly. The pickleball took only a hundred. This past Sunday, I was looking out at Biggie's, my grandpa. And after breakfast, I took him over to the state. And for a lot of people, we're developing, it's called the Iron Soul State. And it's located behind Spring House Farms. Goes back from home, but, oh, no. It's forest decoration, and that is people building that house. But the reason I took my grandkids over to go there was I wanted to show them where their grandparents first came to live when they came from this country, when they married. They came here, my great, their great-grandmother works as a maiden, their great-grandfather works as a horse. They love the property, but the question was, gee, my property's falling down. What's going on there? I said, I don't know. I said, but I do know people I can ask. Can I ask my neighbor? I'm asking you today, what is going on here, Soul State? Do you have an answer?
I, I wish I had an answer for you, but I don't.
Because, you know, it's been, it's been twenty years since this board or its predecessors made a deal with Glee, with the property, and the barn. Nothing's been done. Now, I don't know if the deal included the township was supposed to refurbish it or Glee, but it's really in bad shape.
It's in bad shape.
And, you know, if you're not gonna do nothing with it, then maybe you should consider following to someone who would be interested in buying it and refurbishing it, because it does have history, and it'd be shiny every day.
I, I would agree with you, Mr. Cameron.
Just, just.
Can I get an answer sometime?
Yeah, I'll give you some background on it, um. We were pleaded by the Park and Rec Board, uh, to use the garage for a lot of storage, and it's presently is one of the four to five, units around, uh, sites around the township that the Public Works Department, the Public Works Department, has to use, because we have completely, um, overgrown this building. Uh, they're bulging at the seams. Uh, the police department would like to expand. Uh, so I have proposed to the board and that we have to make, this township has to make a purchase in the future to build a private public works, uh, garage. And when that's done, we could.
And when that's done, we could sell that property to, there are companies that restore historic places. We can take everything out of there that we have. So I agree with you, it's an eyesore, we should have never kept it, but we have no place to go with some of the equipment that's there. So I have talked to the board about it, they realize it, it would alleviate a number of sites we have in the township. But in the future, this. This township building has to be reconfigured for other uses and we have to add another building just for public works. If you ever took a, a walk at the end of the day, you would have a tough time getting into the Public Works Department because of the equipment. The police department would like to utilize that. The Public Works Department don't even have a general meeting room. So to answer your question, you're right. We should be selling it and I'm hopeful that in my lifetime and a lot shorter. That that would be sold to, there are companies that do restore famous buildings like that and, and that we would be out there. So that's been holding it up, we have invested. Improving the heat in that building. And the drainage program. So. You're right, it's, it shouldn't be just sitting there, something has to happen and. Hopefully, the more, this current board and future board, you know, will move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you very much for that question, I'm also interested in the history of how the building came to be in the state that it is in now. One of these dates, we don't have to discuss it right now, but I would like to hear more about the history of it because I'm very interested in. Trying to maintain our historical buildings in the township if possible.
We've had, had offers from people that do that type of work. There, one particular resident in Whitpain Township has done that to a number of buildings in Whitpain. And he's very much interested in securing it and doing exactly that. So we can discuss it further, but I wanted to just give you a little background.
That was a number of years ago, but it might not be a bad idea to reach out to that gentleman again.
Oh, no question.
It might, it might even benefit our historic committee, which hasn't never, which has never formally materialized. To kind of come together and actually establish itself and address some of these concerns.
Okay, is there any more questions from the audience?
There's, I've been asked to read some of the comments that have come in from Zoom. One from Mark Schaefer, he is stated, if you don't put up the nets, then they can't play pickleball, right? And then he said, the, he, who I'm assuming he's referring to the contractor, needs to know where to put the post for the nets. And then Deborah Schaefer, her comment was, as a taxpayer, I do not want this project to go ahead without knowing how much the sound barrier will cost. And then Mark Schaefer wanted to make the comment that with the clear exception of not being able to hear the Zoom attendees, I think they were all, presentation of the Zoom was excellent. With changing camera views and the audio from the meeting room was fine, kudos to the crew that set it up with the obvious fix to the audio.
Okay. It sounds like we don't have any more comments from anyone. Mr. Manager, you have anything to report?
The only thing I have is that PSAT, Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. Or is trying to have their, or they are having their annual meeting, not in May anymore, but in October. So anyone on the board that wishes to attend that, that's October fourteenth and fifteenth. At Hershey, the delegate, who I believe is Tessie, you have the delegate. Their business meeting is from eight to one thirty on that Friday, October fifteenth, but let Carol know if, who's going and who, if anyone is interested in going.
Craig, is that a one day thing?
Right now, yeah, it's a, it's a Thursday night and a Friday morning.
It's not like the whole weekend like before.
No, it's not.
Alright.
It's just the business meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, comments from the supervisors, Mr. Brandt, any thoughts?
I, I think we covered a lot, it's great to get back. I'm tired of looking at Zoom and rather see people face to face like we have tonight and. I want to thank the staff. And the residents. You know, we went through a short time, last time it happened was a hundred years ago. My mother used to tell me all about it, she was only four years old and lost her mother when she was four. And what they went through, you look at that generation. This is the first major thing that we've won. And the residents. The, the country has spared well and I congratulate everybody for. For doing what we had to do to get through this and it's still a struggle, that's all I have to say, but it's just great to get back.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Uh, Kev?
Ditto to Mr. Brandt's comments, but I think it's also very apropos during this park and recreation month and after that robust discussion about a park. Park program to thank our board and also thank our Public Works Mitch, Dan, and who else works in there? Al? Alex, right, right, great, for all their work, they really work really hard, all of our parks, all of our trails, and if you all haven't noticed. All of our park signs have been replaced with new and shiny and environmentally friendly signs. So you see them out there in the parks, giving a little toot from your horn, or if you're walking, thank you for all their work, they do a tremendous job.
Don't scare them.
Thank you. Tessie, any thoughts?
I'd like to go back to the topic of the volunteer fire departments that protect us every day. And just urge people, if you get a fundraising solicitation in the mail from one of the fire companies or the ambulance company. Please dig deep and, and, you know, send some money to these organizations, they didn't, they couldn't fundraise during COVID and. They really need our support and they are volunteers after all, so we thank them very much for, for their hard work to protect us.
Thank you.
Danielle? If I could just add one more comment, I forgot to mention Sandy Fight and she is a huge member and influencer and she works just as hard, if not more. Our park and rec director, Sandy Fight, she'd have my head if I. Rightly so.
Thank you, Kev, Danielle?
I want to concur with everything that my previous supervisor supervisors have said, I actually thought Tessie was gonna say my exact words, she came close. I want to offer my condolences, I think, to the Lower Marion Fire Department families who've lost two of their fire brothers and sisters and I think that. It, all the talk about the fire department and the volunteers, it comes to the forefront of your mind, you don't ever want to see them, you don't want to ever need them. But they're there and they will show up and they are completely volunteered. So kind of echoing what Tessie said, just in, in your thoughts as, as you go about your day, hopefully you never need them, but we have some wonderful fire department. Young men and women and as well as ambulance and EMS personnel, so, you know, contribute as much as you potentially can. Because they're completely operating for our safety and our health, completely volunteer. Beyond that, it is also Park and Rec Month that I wanted to also congratulate and thank our Park and Rec staff for all of their.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Brandt. Certainly.
I don't know if Kathy Morris wants to add anything on what you've been working on at the end of. September. I think this would be a nice opportunity.
Come on up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So we have our event scheduled for September twenty Monday, September twenty sixth. At St. St. High School, there'll be more information coming out in our e-newsletters.
And then additional posts on the township's website and we're gonna use social media and all that. So we're working on, we, we actually have our committee met, we have a little committee. We are working on getting the talent, the music talent, I had a nice conversation with the principal from the high school. So we're working on that, we got the sample food truck last week, so, yeah, it's been fun actually organizing, it's great and we're moving along and I think it's gonna be great, I mean. We're sad we couldn't do Pike Fest, but hopefully this will be something that we can all celebrate together as a community, so I think it will be really nice.
And we have reached out to the, the high school, the school district.
Yep.
And they've been very.
They are great, Mr. Brandt, they're, Sandy and I have met with them twice out there and, you know, to look over the space, they're wonderful, they're really great.
They told me they would.
They're, they're nice to work with, they're really nice people, yeah, so it's, it's been, been a great experience to be honest with you, to work on, yeah, it's been great.
Some of the people that are here probably weren't aware of that, I wanted to make sure.
That, thank you, that they know about the event, yes, in September, so we hope that everybody will be able to come, that'd be great. From one, from twelve to four, to have that right, yeah, twelve to four.
And the Eagles play Monday night.
Yes, so we don't have to worry about that. Thank you.
No, that's important. That's very important, okay. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the new normal. It's great to get back to regular meetings, regular face to face, Zoom is fantastic, but you know, there's something to be said about. Talking to people face to face, shaking hands. Picking up on body language, all those other nonverbal communications. Some things can be a lot more spirited in person like pickleball than you can possibly imagine sometimes. At, at least in a Zoom meeting, so it's, it's fun, it's great to be back and welcome to the new normal, we are adjourned.
I don't think we had a peep out of our solicitors.